Clock on the well says it's six o'clock, so I will officially call the July meeting, City of Beaver Creek Planning Commission to order. And we will start with a roll call, please ma'am.
Mr. Height.
Here.
Mr. Loftus.
Here.
Mrs. Schwartz.
Here.
Mr. Schreider.
Here.
Mr. Self. Here. So everybody's here, and you notice that Ms. Tiffany is no longer at the beginning of the alphabet. She's back at the end of the alphabet. She just got married about two weeks ago, so congratulations. And we need an approval of the agenda. Staff, any additions, corrections, changes? We're good to go. Okay, I need a motion to approve.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the agenda as written.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chair, I have a second.
And I have a second, and we'll do that by general consensus. Thank you very much. Minutes from last month's meetings, meeting on 5 June. Any additions, corrections, changes? Gentlemen? Ms. Schwartz?
See, I got it. Got it.
Hearing none, I'll ask for a motion to approve.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the minutes for the June 5, 2019, meeting.
Thank you.
I have a second.
A second, and we'll do that by general consensus. Thank you very much. Okay, tonight we have a fairly full agenda, and I'll try to get us out of here in time for the Dayton fireworks, or the weird Al Yankovic concert, as it might be. We have four public hearings, a decision item, and a subdivision. So without further ado, we'll start out with PUD 17-3.
This is case number PUD 17-3, mod 6 of 19, on an application filed by M.I. Holmes, 9349 Waterstone Boulevard, Suite 100, Cincinnati, Ohio 45249. The application requests approval of a minor modification to the approved site plan. M.I. Holmes will replace Ryan Holmes as a builder of the development, and is seeking approval to construct their product with the allowance of more two-story homes. Nothing on the site plan will change. The property is located at 3240 Shakertown Road, further described as Book 6, Page 3, Parcel 63, on the Green County Property Tax Atlas.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. Tonight, we're here considering a minor modification. This is a little unique, and I'll start by explaining why we went through the process that we're going through. A minor modification typically is a decision item by Planning Commission without a public hearing. Given some of the interest in the cases, particularly this Cedar Brook Farm case, has been through a couple of different iterations. We had first was the design homes came with the projects, then Ryan Holmes came in with a project. We have a project now that is still moving forward. The site plan is exactly the same as it has been approved by Planning Commission and City Council, but we, Ryan Holmes had pulled out of the development, and we're here tonight considering M.I. Holmes, which is, I think, an upgrade to the development in terms of what they're proposing to do relative to what was proposed earlier. The only reason we're here this evening is not because of the elevations of the houses, it's because the condition was added at City Council that there be no more than four two-story houses within that development. We talked to, that was something that was voluntarily added by Ryan Holmes at the time they were at City Council. City Council took their volunteer, the volunteerism of that comment, and added it as a condition. And we went back, and with M.I. Holmes, they didn't want to limit themselves to the four two-story limitations, so we went back and talked to some representative of City Council and said, "We think it's probably best to open this up for a public hearing, so everybody within 500 feet would be notified that we are changing that condition, even though it is minor in detail," as opposed to something that was significant and qualifies as a major modification. So you can see, I do have the elevations for the homes that M.I. Holmes is proposing to build on those sites. We do have some limitations on this, as outlined in the resolution. The, all the properties that butt up to single, the existing ranch homes on the, would be on the north property line, as well as on the east property line, are required to be one-story homes, so there wouldn't be a two-story home looking in the backyard of a one-story home. But other than that, the only other conditions are on the elevations and the model types and the architectural design of those homes. And that is requiring that no home shall be a similar design next to either side adjacent to or across the street from the house that's being built in that location. So we do have, this again is a minor modification, but we're opening up for public input just because we know the public is interested in this, but the conditions are stated in the resolution, and I believe M.I. Holmes is here to answer any questions if you have them, but after the public hearing, if you have any questions for us, we'd be happy to answer those. Thank you.
Thank you. Would someone from the, representing the developer like to make a quick statement? I bet you would.
Good evening. My name is Justin Lannan with M.I. Holmes. As Jeff outlined, we're here tonight to request approval to build more two-story homes. The analysis we've done on similar communities, namely Stone Hill Village and Beaver Creek Township, about 20% of our buyers are looking for ranches, and so we'd like to obviously appeal to more than just that segment of the population. Happy to answer any questions beyond that.
Great, thank you very much. Since this is a public hearing, a few ground rules, if you would, please limit yourself to three minutes, and yes, we will time you. And please keep in mind, stick to the, stick to the point, so we can get through this. The development has been approved by Planning Commission and by council. All we're looking at tonight is the removal of the restriction of only four two-story houses in the development, with the further requirement that the new development cannot have two-story houses backing up to the existing one-story houses in the plat, in the existing plat. So please limit your comments to that, if you would, or your questions. And also, for the record, I see some of my neighbors out there. I live in the Apple Valley plat, but I am more than 500 feet away from the development, so council tells me that I can participate. So I just wanted to make sure that was perfectly clear. So without further ado, I'll open the public hearing. If you wish to come forward, and please state your name and your address, and speak your piece, and we'll have a, we'll have a clock on you. Dang. Don't be shy.
My name is Robert Wheezy. I live at 3351 Leewood Drive in Beaver Creek. We discussed this a little bit. One of the things I think we're, I'm a little bit concerned about the, I know why they're going to do two-story houses, it's obvious to meet their profit margins, and I don't understand what the problem with the development was where the other companies couldn't meet the development, you know, the development cost they planned. The other concern, really the big concern, is the flooding on maple wood, to make sure that the plan is completed as written. I'd hate to have the company come back and apologize for flooding on maple wood because they couldn't meet the cost factors that they determined. Also, we've discussed this before, of course, is the lot sizes. Can a two-tenths of an acre lot actually, can a two-story house really fit well in a two-tenths of an acre lot? And there's a lot of tenths of an acre lots in this area. And again, I know this is another concern, it's not concern, but we're concerned about the traffic in the area, because I, like Mr. Self, I've been in the area for over 35 years, so, and that's what I've got. Thank you.
Thank you. Other folks? Step right on up.
Hi, I'm Matt Feazer. I live at 755 Newton Drive. I oppose to the change, only because I, I don't think the density of this development is what it should be. I think it should be far less than what it is, so I don't want to see the change. I want to see the whole, I'd like to see it totally rezoned, and/or maybe open to, would you guys do like flexible site plans? So let's say a buyer wants to come in, he wants a two-story home, but that small lot right there, and keep the density down, we, instead of it being on two-tenths of an acre, you combine two of those, two of those lots to make, to make one lot, and put that, the two-story home on it. And you could probably even increase the size of that. I don't know if that's something I could, you know, I'd like to propose that, whether or not you guys would be willing to do something different, since this is an ARPU, instead of a R1A, which I'd like to see it, but, and we're catering, you know, this was originally sold to, you know, commission and council as, you know, targeting, age-targeting those of the retirement age, older community that wanted a small home on a small lot, and there's not much of that to be offered in Beaver Creek. And now we're going to be catering to families with kids. There's no green space on this. I wish if you had a site plan, I mean, if you just show it, there is no green space here. You're putting 70 homes on 19 acres is what it is. I mean, you've got 10 acres of roads and right-ofways and detention ponds, retention ponds, whatever you want to call them. I mean, it's just too, too dense. And now you have burden on the, on the schools, given that the, you know, the redistricting going on, and the recent, the first school levy failed, now you'd be going to voters to fix the overcrowding issue because of high-density developments like this. And also have concern with, in the zoning code, 158.071, it's the, the ARPU's for coverage of the total gross area of the development should not exceed 45%. I did M-J calculation on the drawing, and the streets alone are 15%. Driveways and sidewalks are another 5%. Now you're putting 70 rooftops on it. So what about, you know, accessory structures, sheds, garages? People want back porches, decks. I find it hard to believe you're going to be within that 45% with the density. So considering, you know, considering, you know, maybe a flexible site plan where if somebody wanted a two-story home, you combine two of those lots and make one, would eliminate those issues, it would help with the density, help with the congestion that's already, I've seen get significantly worse over, you know, the past years, but, I mean, growth is good. I'm not against growth, but I don't, you know, see the need to pack all these in there. So I'm opposed to this change for those reasons.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Others who wish to speak? Did we have any written input?
No.
Last chance, folks. Okay, I will close the public hearing, and I'm going to start on my left tonight.
Just a quick, a quick question for the applicant, please. So what is the relationship between M.I. Holmes and Ryan Holmes? Is there one?
No.
Completely separate?
Completely separate entity.
And given, given the input from, you know, the public here, your changes to that density are, they were concerned last time this came up, right? So you're using their same plan, but you're changing some of the aspects of it. Can you, can you talk to how those, the changes to the elevation, and again, maybe not catering to, I believe last time they told us, you know, 46 to 65-year-old and an older population, are these houses in fact meant to attract that same population?
I would say, you know, on the first question, it's hard to speak to someone else's position, to Ryan's position, on why they were doing what they were doing with the development, why they wanted to move forward with ranch, a ranch community, and target the older buyer. For us, you know, I would say our target consumer with this is going to be, you know, probably late 30s, early 40s, on up, a family buyer, potentially an empty nester. We are going to be offering, you know, three to four ranch plans, roughly 20 elevations on those plans. Every lot in the subdivision could be a ranch. If all ranch buyers show up, then every ranch, every lot would, you know, conceivably could have a single-story home on it. As I mentioned earlier, in our analysis of the market, there really isn't a way to justify this project as an empty nester community only. And so that's where we are. Does that have something to do with the reason, you know, the applicant has changed, and we're here today, and you're not looking at Ryan? Perhaps. Can't speak to that directly.
So given that, though, given the fact that you're, let's just take the, just take the age, the age out of it, you know, these fifth of an acre lots, I mean, that's a relatively small lot for a house of this size, right?
Typical for the market right now. This isn't, this is not atypical for what we're building all over Cincinnati and Dayton. All of our homes will fall within the required setbacks of the subdivision guidelines. Folks are welcome to have, you know, a smaller home on the lot, if they want to have, you know, more lot area to enjoy. Not everybody sees it that way, though. Some folks would like to max out the, you know, the home, and have a two-story, have the, you know, the big box on the lot. So we give them that option.
All right, thank you for your time.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chair, that's all for me for now.
Ms. Schwartz.
Sir, can you please come back? I'm sorry.
That's all right.
I apologize.
No problem. I'll start on my right, then.
And looking, no, 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 I mean the...
Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me.
No, no. Okay. So I have a question here. I'm looking at this package that we have, and there's a lot of different, I guess, options, perhaps, that say, like down at the bottom, one says Cook. I don't know what the rest say. What is the difference between each of these, I guess, different selections of elevation that have been provided to us?
So this is our classic series home. Every page that you're looking at, we're looking at one up on the screen that says, now it says Cook, it did say Sorrell, there's Sorrell. So that's the plan that we offer. So generally speaking, the floor plan for the Cook or the Sorrell, or any of the given plans, will be generally the same with options available to that, and then the buyer can select from the various elevations that we offer.
Okay, that makes more sense. Thank you. I don't think I have any questions, any additional questions for you, sir. Thank you. Mr. Mormon, is there any concern, I'm sorry to make you come up here, but is there any concern with the flooding? I'd like to address Mr. Wheezy's concern. With these homes being larger, I don't know, you're much smarter in the engineering than I will ever be. Is that, does that affect the larger structures? Is that going to affect the way the floodplain?
Sure, sure. And when they do the detailed design for the detention facility, they'll have to take into account the impervious area, so if there's more impervious area, it would equate to increased storage requirements for the pond. So regardless of the coverage of the lot, we'll have to accommodate for that, and how much water comes off the project.
And that will be addressed when?
What will happen is after all this gets approved, and they come in with their detailed plans, is when we'll do the actual, the final on the pond design, and how much is allowed to be released, and those kind of calculations.
Okay. I think that's all the questions, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead. Thank you.
Now, I'll move to my right.
All right. I just had a question for staff.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Why was the two-story covenant put forth in the first place? Give us a little bit of color as to why...
You know, this project came through Planning Commission, and without the restriction, it was recommended to be approved by City Council. City Council got into discussion with the applicant in terms of what their target market was, and I think Mr. Height hit it on the head. The conversation was Ryan was looking at this for a wider house, so I mean, it would actually be, we're not actually increasing the impervious area, the footprint is shrinking, and the building will go up, which actually creates more green space, but the targeted, like 55 and older type home, where it's a ranch-style, smaller lots, I mean, the markets there across the board, not just for 55 and orders, for smaller lots, less maintenance, because that's just the market, and it's the market all across the Dayton region in terms of even first-tone buyers, in terms of, and then people who are downsizing from a 20,000-square-foot lot that may be 55 and older, they want lower maintenance in terms of their property, but they don't want necessarily compromise on their house. So what we're looking at here is, Ryan saw that market as a 55 and older type deal, and they offered that for the limitation of four two units. So they didn't absolutely say they would get rid of the whole two-story project, they still said we have at least, we wouldn't do any more than four. But we, with our discussions with M.I. Holmes, when they came in, they haven't done a project here again, and we haven't had, in terms of the school overcrowding, everything, we haven't had a single-family home project come through for rezoning approval since 2005. So it's not like this is a constant, a constant grind in terms of building new rooftops in the city of Beaver Creek. I understand the township's different, but within the city of Beaver Creek itself, this is a fairly, I think, a new project for us in terms of the last 15 years, and how it's gone with the single-family development, which is good because it controls the market, and our existing subdivisions build out, and the lots are, a lot of the lots that had took time during the recession to build are no, are finally built out, and so there's a demand for some housing in the city of Beaver Creek. But what we're looking at in our discussions with M.I. Holmes was to offer, offer a multitude of products and not limit themselves was, would ultimately lead to a project being developed faster than, than maybe prolong it throughout a longer period of time, where if you couldn't meet the market needs, with, if the two-story market was there, then if you can't build it, you know, you'd have, you'd be living in a construction zone for who knows how long, in terms in order to try to dictate the market instead of react to the market. So that's where we, that's kind of how this all came about, was in terms of how this project would move most efficiently, not limited to options, always keep single-family homes, ranch patio homes available, and if that is the market like, like was stated, then that would be obviously what would drive the development.
Okay. All right, I appreciate it. Thank you.
I just had one question for the applicant, please. What is the targeted price point for the homes? Because I see quite a spread in square footage, it looks like up to 34, all the way down to like a little over 2,000.
That's right.
Yeah, so what's your targeted price point for that spread?
It's a little early to lock that in definitively, but I can offer that we would, opening price for the smallest ranch would probably be, you know, right around 300. And then obviously, after you add in your options, and you go up from there, average sales price in the community would be probably upwards of $400,000.
Okay. Okay. I appreciate it. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. So I just have one question for staff, just clarification. So based on what you just said, city planning did not impose the one-story restriction, and city council also did not impose that, it wasn't on their minds, it was solely at the discretion of the, of Ryan Holmes at the time to offer that?
I won't go, I wouldn't, I don't want to put words in anybody's mouth or speak for anybody else, but council did have a discussion in terms of the market. I mean, they, they feel that there is a need in Beaver Creek to have, or at least individuals, I'm not saying collectively, but they had, there's, there could be a need to downsize from the 20,000-square-foot lots for some of our older residents to come into more ranch-style, lifelong, like till the end of your life type house, which would be wider doorways, wider hallways, those kind of things, the amenities that aren't readily available abundantly within the city of Beaver Creek. So they thought that that would be a good market to hit here. And I still, that's still a viable opinion, and I think it still could possibly happen. It's just a matter of the fear of jumping into limitations and that, from that standpoint, and having the project take way longer than would be originally anticipated with that limitation. But to your point, it was something that was discussed with city council, but the condition was offered by the home builder at the time, and it was just something they said, "Okay, we'll go with that." It was, it wasn't a mandate by them, but it was a result of a conversation that was happening at the meeting that night.
Okay. And one more thing, just to address the green space. So the, the site plan that was already approved originally, this site plan isn't changing at all from that, the way it's laid out, lot sizes, all of that is all the same, correct?
Yeah, not, everything's the same. Everything from the, obviously, Mr. Mormon addressed the construction drawings, the construction drawings, same engineer who's been for the first, second, and now this, this development has been on board from day one, so that's the same plans, everything will be submitted in greater detail to our engineering to make sure everything meets the requirements, and it does meet the 55% open space requirement.
Okay. I think that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Don't run off.
Sir.
The, the development as, as it has been approved, and what we have right now, it, how does it work in terms of meeting the, the pervious versus impervious surface?
Like we just said, I think it's, the requirement is a 50, minimum 55% open space requirement for our PUDs, and that would, right now, as it's been calculated, that would be sufficient, and I mean, it's, we don't look at it, we don't look at it as maybe this happens, somebody builds a detached garage, or somebody puts a shed, we look at it as, when it comes through for the proposal. And all the impervious surface calculations, everything will be conservatively estimated to make sure that all, all the impervious calculations now, or even in the future, are considered when you're containing stormwater.
Okay, so, so we're, we're good on that. The, typically, if you have, say, a 2,000-square-foot ranch versus a 2,000-square-foot two-story house, it's kind of a no-brainer that the two-story is going to have a smaller footprint, which means more green space.
Less impervious surface, correct.
Okay. So there is an advantage to having more two-story houses, because there will be more open space, it won't be taking up my house.
Yeah, to get the square footage, the price points that they're talking about, a ranch would probably extend all the way to the minimum, what, the maximum development standards for setback requirements, whereas you may have more flexibility if you build vertical as opposed to horizontal.
One other question for you, and that is the, the lots that abut the existing half-acre single-family lots, we use a nominal 20,000 square feet for half-acre, even though a half-acre really is 22,500, or something like that. I'm used to seeing square footage on lots, and these are fractions of an acre. Do all of those lots meet that, that requirement, that 20,000, 20,000-square-foot requirement?
Yeah, it's required by the zoning code, anything that butts an adjacent 20,000 or R1A minimum requirement size lot down. You could have a 40,000-square-foot lot that's in our way, but the minimum is 20,000. So 20,000 is the standard, granted, it's a little less than a half-acre, but all those lots that do abut the existing R1A properties are a minimum 20,000 square feet. And in terms of density, I mean, this is a low-density designated area on a land use plan, less than three units per acre. So when we're talking high, that's the lowest density calculation we have from a land use plan. This all falls within the parameters of a land use plan for a low-density development, three units or less per acre. And then it goes up to 5.5, then it goes up to 9.5 units per acre, which is high-density, five to 5.5 is medium-density. So this is still considered a low-density development, based on all the land use plan that's approved by ordinance by Planning Commission, City Council, that qualifies as a low-density development.
And it's been a while since we had a subdivision come in with all half-acre lots, if my memory serves me.
I've never seen it.
I don't remember either, and I've been around a little bit longer.
Actually, there was one, there was one that came in at R1A by the Veterans Memorial on North Fairfield Road, but that was the only one that we've seen, that didn't have, and that was a few lots on a smaller parcel, but this is a, again, a PUDs, there's a lot of things that have to be negotiated through that process.
Okay. Thank you. I have one question for our, for our developer, if you would. When you, when you all typically develop a plat like this, you build, do you build these houses to order, or do you build a group of them and sell them, and build another group and sell them, or are they built to order?
Generally built to order.
Okay.
We may have one or two market homes that we'll start with out of the gate, just to get things flowing, but then as sales pick up, typically it's built to order.
Okay, so, so you don't know what the mix is going to be between one and two-story, other than the fact that the, the abutting lots are all going to be one-story?
Correct.
Okay. So what do you estimate the build-out? I think this is phased, if my memory serves me.
Yes.
What do you estimate the build-out on the phases? Do you have a, do you have an educated guess?
Are you asking lots per phase?
No, I'm asking...
Oh, timeline.
Timeline, correct.
So we're doing 70 lots here. You know, generally, we've, you know, we forecast, you know, roughly two a month, so this is, you know, probably just shy of a three-year project for us.
Okay. Good, that's what I needed to know. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Second helpings? Gentlemen? Ms. Schwartz?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And this is, just for the audience, this is a minor mod, which means that we have administrative power on this, which means we vote on it, and this does not go further to council. We are, we are the folks on this one. So I would like a motion from someone, please.
Mr. Chair, I motion to approve PUD 17-3. Mr. Chair, I motion to approve PUD 17-3, the minor modification with the four attached conditions.
Okay, I have a motion.
Mr. Chair, a second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Anything else before we vote? Okay, let's go. If you would be so good as to read the roll.
Mr. Loftus?
Yes.
Mrs. Schwartz?
Yes.
Mr. Schreider?
Yes.
Mr. Height?
Yes.
Mr. Self?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0, and we'll be looking forward to seeing the development as it progresses. Okay, moving right along. Next one is PC 19-4 Dean's Plumbing, another conditional use.
This is case number PC 19-4, conditional use on an application filed by Pamela Dean, 649 North Monroe, Xenio, Ohio 45385. The applicant requests conditional use approval to allow for a plumbing business in a B2 Community Business District. The properties are located on the east side of North Fairfield Road, approximately 1,000 feet north of the intersection of North Fairfield Road and Shakertown Road. The properties are further described as Book 6, Page 3, Parcels 55 and 104 on the Green County Property Tax Atlas.
Thank you. I presume we have, Mike, I presume we have some representatives here?
We do.
Thank you.
This is my husband, Bill Dean, and I am Pamela Dean, and he owns it, and I run it right now, so yes.
She's the brains.
Okay. So as you had mentioned, we are requesting permission to build there for a plumbing office, and so if you have questions, our architect is here also, so he's smarter than I am, and he can answer some of those for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Y'all can sit down now, we'll have staff report. I'm sure we'll have questions for you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of Planning Commission. Before use an application requesting approval of a conditional use to allow for the construction of an approximately 5,100-square-foot commercial office and storage building at 742 North Fairfield Road, formerly the Wicklines Garden Center. So the conditional, the property under discussion is currently Zoned B2 Community Business District. Within our schedule of permitted uses, air conditioning, heating, plumbing services, repair, and retail stores are conditionally permitted within B2 zoning districts. So before an applicant can get any zoning permits to occupy or build a building in a straight zoning district with a conditional use, they have to receive conditional use approval from the Planning Commission, so it does require one public hearing. As previously stated, the property is located at 742 North Fairfield Road and is approximately 1.52 acres on the two parcels. It is the former Wicklines Garden Center, and the front parcel contains the 1,200-square-foot... Hold on a second. 1,200 square foot. All right, we're going to use the clicker here. 1,200 square foot former Wicklines Garden Center, as well as the parking lot, which both, if you've seen them lately, are in pretty bad shape, probably look worse than this, which this picture was taken in 2018. So as part of this application, the applicant is proposing to demolish both the building and the existing parking lot. So with the proposed site plan, the applicant's proposing 23 parking spaces. The zoning code requires that there be one parking space for each employee on the largest shift, as y'all are aware, for a plumbing business or any type of contractor service like this, you don't really have too many customers coming to the site, so it's based on employees only. The applicant has stated that they will have, I believe, 16 employees, so that leaves them seven additional spaces for, you know, work vehicles. A lot of plumbing businesses, the employees actually take the vehicles home and drive them back and forth to work. We are, we do allow the work vehicles to be parked outside, however, any equipment related to the business will need to be kept indoors, so, and there is a condition of approval, it doesn't allow any of the, any equipment outside of the work vehicles to be parked outside. There are currently two access points onto North Fairfield Road. As you can see here, when the road was widened, those two access points were created. Originally, it was all just one giant access point. On the site plans that are shown there, those two access points still do remain. The applicant was originally proposing to just block these, this, the access point to the north off. Their thinking is that in the future, they would be expanding the building and maybe expanding the parking lot up this way. But after reviewing the plans and having a discussion, staff feels that once these two lots are combined, which will be a requirement with this as well, that the size of the site and the size of the building, even with an addition, doesn't really warrant having two large access points, especially having them both straddle kind of rear-drive, which would create some confusion. We did add a condition that that second access, that northern access point be removed, and that the curb and everything be repaired, so that, you know, it doesn't look like there was ever a point there to begin with. And in the future, if they do decide to build an addition or a parking lot expansion, that southern access point should suffice for the amount of traffic that they're going to have on site. As far as the building goes, the applicant is proposing a primarily metal building with a standing seam metal roof. A significant portion of the front and the side of the building is going to be brick. They're also showing brick wrapping around the back of the building as well. On the front and the side, there is a section of the blue that you can see on the overhead, and that's actually a blue glazed brick that they're proposing to put on the building just to break up that, the brown, the tan look. And I think, yeah, there's, that's an example of kind of what that blue glazed brick looks like that was provided by the architect as well. As far as lighting and landscaping goes, because this property abuts residential, the lighting is only allowed to be a maximum of 16 feet high. So the applicant is proposing seven 16-foot-tall light poles. We added a condition that when the business is closed, that the lighting be reduced to 25%, so that we don't have any issues with spillover into any residential district. Landscaping, we will require a finalized landscape plan. There are a couple of areas that we would like to see some additional landscaping, including around the back of the dumpster. They are going to have some ground-mounted units. They are showing a significant landscape area to screen those on the north side of the building. And then they also have a six-foot mound back in the back of the property. At this time, we think that that six-foot mound should be sufficient. It's, you know, almost 250 feet from that back property line, and I don't think my aerial photo shows it, but, yeah. So it's, what's back here is the detention pond for Ballymead Village. And in the future, if they do decide to expand eastward, which is kind of in their future plan, then we will go back and require additional landscaping, but at this time, staff feels that the amount of landscaping that is being proposed is sufficient. And then as far as signage goes, it's a B2 zoning district, so they just have to meet the requirements of B2 zoning. So based on the building that they're showing, they would be allowed a 55-square-foot wall sign. I think the sign that they're showing on there is a little bit bigger than that, but that's not with this approval. It'll just be the straight B2 zoning, and then, of course, they're allowed a ground sign as well. 25 square feet per side, five feet tall, and they do show that on their, on their site plan, which is right up here. Based on that, staff is recommending approval with the conditions found in the attached resolution, and if you have any questions, I can answer those following the public hearing.
Thank you. Nice and comprehensive. As this is a public hearing, same rules as before. If you wish to come forward and make comments, speak for, against, or simply ask questions, please feel free to do so.
I'm Matt Feizer, I live at 755 Newton Drive. I'm all for the business, I think that's great. The site right now is obviously some of an eyesore. However, since I'm here for something else, I might as well speak up on this. I'm concerned with the water runoff. Obviously Beaver Creek is pretty good at kicking the can down the road when it comes to water runoff, and it's kicked all the way down to, if we can go back to the aerial photo, please. You can see to the, on the, it's a Grace Covenant Church parking lot, and you see that there's a big wet spot. So I'm being told that detention or retention, whatever you want to call it, pond is calculated correctly for the area of that church and the area of their parking lot with their addition they put on back in, I think it was '05, '06. And maybe that's true, but it doesn't appear to be, as the water runoff is very excessive, and it comes from other areas, which upstream, obviously, which I'd hate to pass the buck on to these folks, but they're upstream. So what could we do, what could the city do to mitigate some of that water runoff that's going to come from this to keep it from contributing to this detention pond that's located in the back of the Grace Covenant Church? They also, if that little speck inside of the middle of that detention pond is, there's a pump in there. Whether or not it's running, I don't know, but it's still in there, and I don't like it, and I don't know who approved it and let it go that way. But that is, it still has yet to be addressed, yeah, that's it right there. So my concern is the water runoff, and how are we going to mitigate that from getting worse? Thank you.
Thank you. Others who wish to speak on this? Any written input?
No.
Last call? Okay, I'll close the public hearing, and I'll start with Ms. Schwartz.
Can we go back to the other picture again, please? Can you address the water issues?
Absolutely, yeah.
Thank you.
It's very important when we look at the drainage and the pre-development versus post-development, we have to maintain the flow of water where something we cannot do is if the water today, for example, flows to the northeast in the pre-development, we have to make sure it goes the same way in the post-development. We can't redirect that water somewhere else. So we really don't really have any other choice than to let the water go in the future after development in the same way it goes today. So, you know, I think the concern might be, or what he might be asking is that we redirect it, which is something that we cannot do. You know, when we do these pond designs, though, we have a very conservative stormwater ordinance, and typically what we see is the runoff after development is actually less than pre-development, as far as peak flows go. The pond to the north, you know, that generally drains to the east through that private property, and we really can't control what goes on in those private properties. And if I recall correctly, when I looked at it last time, there were some issues with some filling, I think there's maybe like a smaller diameter pipe a gentleman installed through his yard, which I think might be contributing to the issues there.
So that's considered a pond? That's not just sitting water?
Allegedly, it's a dry pond, but you can see it commonly holds water back there. And this is, this picture is representative of what you would see if you went out there today, or even on a dry day, I think it typically holds water back there.
And there's no real way to address it, then? Is that what I'm gathering?
Yeah, I think we looked at it last time. Like I said, the water wants to flow to the east, or it should be flowing to the east through that gentleman's private property there, and I think there was some work that was done on that lot, like I said, like a small diameter pipe, or, you know, where it's not letting the water get out, I think was the core issue.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Sure.
That's all the questions I have, sir. Thank you.
Yep, go to me. I just had a question for staff. What's the impervious surface change? Do you guys, do you know kind of roughly?
I don't think I have that calculation. I mean, it's not going to be that much different if you look at this entire, this entire lot here is impervious surface now. And so with the, oops. I mean, it's minimal, but, I mean, regardless, they do have a detention pond. They are required to have a detention pond.
So they're going to be building a detention-
Yes, they're building a detention pond.
Which should potentially, I know this is more of a Mr. Mormon question, but should help with some of the water issues.
Yes.
This specific lot's causing today.
Right, because there's nothing there now. Yeah, I didn't mention it in my staff report, I mean, in my presentation, but yes, there is a detention pond that will be built on site.
So actually, this will be an upgrade from what the water's doing today-
Yes.
-affecting the eastern properties today?
Correct, correct.
Okay. And the impervious surface, I was kind of doing a rough calculation with the scale, it seems to be about a little bit more, but just slightly, very similar.
It may be slightly more, but, yes, and that's what actually warrants the detention pond, is when you increase the amount of impervious surface, so.
And the slope, is it going to slope away or towards North Fairfield as far as the drainage, like the parking lot, which I guess I could look at the-
I mean, it's going to-
Is it going to slope back towards the east?
Towards the pond.
Okay. Yeah. It's going to slope, hmm. Actually, it's a-
852, 850.
Okay.
And the future building lot coverage is actually 8%. So I don't know what it is right now.
Okay, that's all I had. Thank you very much.
Moving right along.
I don't have any questions.
Okay.
Thank you.
No questions, Mr. Chair.
I have a few. Are you all happy with the ground sign in terms of line of sight? It looks like it could be difficult to see around right by the driveway.
Yeah, it kind of does look like it, but if you, so if you look at the actual apron, it's here, and the sign is way back here.
Okay.
And part of that will be, when they do come in for that, the sign, we make sure that it isn't a line-of-sight issue. So if it needs to be set back further than five feet from behind the sidewalk, we'll make sure that it is.
Okay. And now, the detention pond, where does it drain to?
That is a question for Mr. Mormon.
Okay, well, I'll get him up here in just a minute, I've got one or two more for you. The HVAC unit, particularly the one on the north side, it looks from our drawing that there is, is that a wall or?
No, no, it's not a wall, it's just a, I think it's just showing that they are there, but there is a, there's a hedgerow, a solid, let's see. There's a solid hedgerow all along that portion-
Okay.
-to block those HVAC units.
I was looking at one of the drawings, the one that shows Dean's Plumbing, which is presumably what faces North Fairfield, and there's something that is shadowing that HVAC unit. I just want to make sure it isn't visible from the street.
Yeah.
Whether it be evergreens, or a wall, or whatever.
Yep.
Okay. And this may be something for Jeff, but I presume that the fuel tanks there are long gone?
Yes.
Because that was a Soho gas station once upon a time.
Yeah, the fuel tanks were removed. I believe the applicant does have documentation showing that those tanks were removed.
Okay. One final thing, do we really need 16-foot light poles? Could they be shorter? And also, could some of those lights be building-mounted to shine out onto the parking lot? I know we've done that before on one of the developments along Beaver View.
I mean, they could be, the poles could be shorter, I'm not sure about, I think when you talk about mounting lights onto the wall, I think our preference is to mount them in the parking lot.
Okay.
Because generally, when you mount them on the wall, they're going to point outwards and not down.
Right.
So, but yes, I mean, I think they could be made shorter. I think one of the issues with making them shorter is then you have to have more of them to fully light the parking lot. But that's, I mean, if that's something that, that's something that we could look at to see if they're made shorter, how many more they would need, and if that's going to create any issues with foot candles.
I'm just worried about excessive light pollution, realizing that we're still several hundred feet away from either Ballymead or the existing houses.
And we do require with the photometric plan that there be zero foot candles at the property line, so.
Okay, well- Okay, well, I'll stick with that, then. I'll leave it up to you all. Second helpings, folks?
Um, yeah, I did have one.
Okay, well, let me ask our city engineer about the detention pond and where it goes.
Sir, I believe they're still laying out the pond, but if you look at the drawing here on the screen, you can see what the contours are doing. The lowest contour is along that northern property line, which is the low end of the site. And typically, the detention facility is located on the low part of the property. So I would say, based on the existing lay of the land, the pond will be along that northeast corner of the development.
Okay. I'm relatively familiar with that. There's a swale that runs through between the southernmost house on Newton Drive and the second to the southernmost house, and that drains into that long spring drain that runs down, I'm sorry, Maplewood, thank you. Yes, it runs down Maplewood and eventually empties into the creek by Merrick Park. Is there, is that how this detention pond is going to drain if it overflows? Across that swale into the, across the stub end of Newton and then down Maplewood?
Yeah, if you look at the topography, everything is tributary to that system. It'll eventually end up in that same system.
But you don't foresee excessive runoff from this, you don't foresee exacerbation of the runoff that we have now, I realize you?
Correct, yeah.
We can't have that.
Yeah, so our ordinance requires a detention facility be built, and our ordinance, again, is very conservative. Where typically the peak flows after development are less than pre-development rates.
Right, I know that from experience, because we've seen that many times before. Okay, you've answered my question.
Great, thank you.
Thank you much. Did you have another question? Somebody did?
I did.
Oh, okay.
I guess maybe this is more general to my fellow commissioners, too. Perpetual maintenance landscaping, since we have that hedgerow that's being used as a, as kind of a barrier to cover up the?
To make sure that it always?
Yeah, and make sure it's always there, since we're not installing a permanent structure, that we put a perpetual clause in there.
Absolutely, yeah, I'll add a fourteenth condition.
Okay.
That standard kind of boilerplate.
Okay.
Good catch.
All right, that's it. Looks good.
Further second helpings here?
Thank you.
Folks?
Do we want to add additional condition, or do we just want to add it to twelve?
Yeah, that's what I was going to suggest. Twelve on landscape, anyway. Yeah, exactly. I just add it right there.
Okay.
We'll just say with the attached, thirteen conditions, modify twelve.
One more thing, just to clarify, on the, on the conditions, it says thirteen is no outside storage, sale, or display of merchandise or equipment is permitted. That means that if they have, for example, well-drilling equipment, or a backhoe on a trailer, that has to be inside?
Yes.
They can't leave like a pickup truck or something?
Correct.
But nothing other than?
Correct, yeah.
Small trucks?
Nothing else.
Got it?
Yep.
Okay, good. Just wanted to clarify that. I'm looking for a motion, fellow commissioners.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve conditional use PC nineteen dash four with the attached thirteen conditions with condition number twelve being modified to read perpetual maintenance of landscaping.
Shall be required.
Yes, shall be required.
Okay, I have a motion.
Mr. Chair, I have a second.
I have a second, okay. Before we read the roll, since I haven't moved in the last hour or so, I still live in the same plat, but I'm outside the five hundred feet on this, I just want to say that for the record. And once again, we are administrative on this, this does not go forward to city council, does it? Okay. So with that, if you would be so good as to read our roll.
Ms. Schwartz?
Yes.
Mr. Schreider?
Yes.
Mr. Height?
Yes.
Mr. Loftus?
Yes.
Mr. Self?
Yes, motion carries five zero, and folks, we are really pleased to get rid of that eyesore building. Those of us who live in that plat, that go by there every day, we were hoping that somebody would come in and put something nice in, so, thank you. Okay, moving right along, we have yet another public hearing, this is PUD eighteen dash four, specific site plan two.
This is case number PUD eighteen dash four, specific site plan number two, on an application filed by John Koppelcheck, thirty-five hundred Pentagon Boulevard, Suite five hundred, Beaver Creek, Ohio, four five four three one. The application requests approval of a specific site plan to allow for the development of nine self-storage buildings and a rental office on three point three seven acres of land. The property is located on the east side of Harbert Drive approximately two hundred thirty feet north of the intersection of Harbert Drive and Indian Ripple Road. The properties are further described as book three, page nineteen, parcels ninety-seven, ninety-eight, and one oh five on the Green County Property Tax Atlas.
Thank you. I presume there is someone here representing the developer? Here he comes.
My name's John Koppelcheck. Just a quick little history, I guess, this is really the last leg of this development that we bought here early this year. Came in to be rezoned under CPUD for specifically this use kind of on the back, three-fourths of the property that we bought. We originally bought four point six acres, and we are, have, came back in with a specific site plan for that front parcel, which we're doing the retail building on, and this is kind of the last part of this. So self-storage project that we plan on getting started, hopefully, right upon approval through this process. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you.
I think we've seen that one before.
Evening, Mr. Chairman, members of Planning Commission. The case you have before you is PUD eighteen dash four, it's the Harbert Self-Storage Specific Site Plan Number Two. The applicant's looking for approval of a specific site plan to allow for the construction of nine storage unit buildings, along with a rental office on a little bit, little bit over three and a third acres. Project's located in southern Beaver Creek, it's about two hundred and thirty feet north of the intersection of Harbert Lane, Harbert Drive, and Indian Ripple Road. It's the three parcels you see here, this is Indian Ripple, and this is Harbert. As Planning Commission is aware, this was all part of, these four parcels was all part of a rezoning application earlier this year, and the applicant came through for a retail building on this corner lot, which was approved by city council over the last few months. And so, again, they're interested in getting the remaining three lots, an approval for those three lots for the store and lock buildings. Again, you can see the mostly vacant area, I think that a lot of this, these trees have been cleared already. But it is a vacant lot now, they have a good bit of frontage on Harbert Drive, and you can see there's a sidewalk on the other side of Harbert Drive. There will be sidewalk on Indian Ripple Road, we're going to extend that as part of public projects all the way to Grange Hall, and then potentially beyond, and in front of the retail building. When they do that building, they're going to extend the sidewalk on Harbert, so as part of this project, we're going to have them extend the sidewalk along Harbert as well, so we can continue that pedestrian system throughout the site. Seen here is the proposed site plan, and it's kind of turned, north is actually to the right on this. There's one access point to the site, it's right here, it's at the far southwest corner of the building, or at the, of the three-acre area. They're going to have a gate at this location, it's going to have a keypad, number pad, so it's limited access to the users only. The seven hundred square foot office is going to be located here, so they'll have parking outside of the gated area for employees and for customers who want to either sign up for, to rent a unit, or need to pay their bill, or whatever, that don't have a key access yet, there is area for them to park. But the nature of the businesses, these type of businesses, is you wouldn't really have separate parking within the development, because you wouldn't have somebody park over here and then walk to their unit to fill it, to load it, unload it, they would just pull up to wherever their bay door was, load and unload their car, and then ultimately leave the site. So, you know, we feel that the four parking spaces that they're proposing here, including one handicap parking space, is adequate for the, what they're proposing with this location. But as you can see, there are nine buildings, one here, and then six back here on the back of the site, as well as two along Harbert Road. And in between the buildings, so you can see between this building, and then along this area here, and then between these buildings, and between these buildings, there's actually more fencing. It's the same decorative aluminum fencing that they're proposing as the gate, so the entire area will be controlled access and secure, for security reasons, both for those users of the site, as well as, you know, the general area, you wouldn't want people being able to freely enter and access these type of developments. Seen here are the architectural elevations, it's kind of hard to see in these black and whites, I just wanted to show you that they do show along the entire frontage of this property, this brick and ephesus building with, it's got a stone base, it's got brick siding, and then it's got some gray slate ephesus along the top, so it does have architectural features. These, when I first saw that, I thought, are these bay doors that are facing on the outside, but no, they're ephesus panels, so, and it's kind of easier to see on the color photo, those aren't bay doors that are facing the outside of the road, those are actually just architectural features. And you can see the brick alternating stone base and brick base, and then the gray slate ephesus cap. And that same brick and stone and ephesus will be, is proposed to be used on the, on the office building itself. One thing that we don't have at this time is the architectural elevations for this western, I'm sorry, the easternmost portion of these easternmost buildings, and we did add a condition that those be, those be reviewed and approved by the planning department, because, you know, this, in the future, this could redevelop over here, and those will no longer be the backs of any buildings, those will be the fronts of a future building of what goes on in this site back here. So we just want to review those architectural elevations, make sure that they do carry those same architectural features that they're proposing along Harbert Drive, along the backs of those easternmost buildings. Just to give you an idea how the two developments, the retail building kind of meshes with the proposed store and locks, all the buildings are in orange, there's the retail building and the parking lot, they're independent of each other, but there is one access point here that lines up with the access point across the street, and then there's one access point for this store and lock at this location here. But I just wanted to give you an idea how the two sites relate to each other. In terms of landscaping, they do show a good amount of landscaping, in terms of shade trees and decorative shrubs and grasses along Harbert Drive. We did add a condition that additional landscaping be added along the northern section, along this area here, as well as, again, because in the future, should this develop, we don't want this to end up just being the back of the building, so we're asking that they add additional landscaping along the western, or the eastern property line as well. So that, those are in the conditions of approval that we're recommending. In terms of the ground signage, this was a sign that was approved with the retail building, they're just proposing to use one of the, one of the sections of this overall ground sign. So they're not looking for any additional ground sign with this project, I just wanted to show you what was approved already. They are looking to have some, some wall signage on the, on the office building itself, but staff doesn't see any problem with what they're proposing. We are recommending approval of their request, and I'll be happy to answer questions following the public hearing. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. This is a public hearing, so if there are folks here who wish to ask questions, speak in favor, against, or whatever, please step forward. Last chance, any written input?
Yes, we did have written input on this one. The commissioners, they received two emails from Steve Nuttall, owner of SRI Lease Company, located at seventy-five A Harbert Drive, and his emails were expressing his concern with the design of the building.
Did he go into any specifics on the, what they, what it was?
It's the pitch roof. It's the pitch roof, sir.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Okay, last chance for folks here tonight. Okay, I'll close the public hearing, and I'm going to start way over here on the right, it's your turn.
I guess one question for staff, then. So with regard to the written input and the pitched roof concern, did you look into that at all to address those concerns, or are you able to explain them?
I mean, I?
What his concern was?
In terms of the pitch roof, you know, we looked at this before we got those, that written input, and it's more, the way the roof system they're preferring is to have them more, I mean, they're slightly pitched, but they want to have that all drain into a certain area, so they, they're using that, it's all part of their drainage system, is the way the roofs are sloped.
Right.
I mean, it's not a true gabled roof or anything like that, and I know that, you know, in the written input, it states that there were some covenants and restrictions requirements for pitched roof, but that's, you know, those are private covenants and restrictions between two private landowners that, you know, the city really doesn't partake in enforcing.
So that has no application, really, in our decision up here?
No, that would be, that's something that two neighbors agreed to on their own, and if we can't get involved in those, we'd be, I mean, that would be something we'd be doing all day long.
Understand.
Makes that pretty easy.
Yeah, that was the only question I had, thank you.
No questions, Mr. Chair.
No questions, sir.
Okay.
No questions.
Well, I'd be remiss if I didn't have at least one.
Sure.
The downspouts on the buildings, do they lead to underground, to underground piping for the runoff, or do they just dump onto the asphalt? I'm just curious. If they're pitching the roofs as part of their drainage system?
I believe, and John, you can correct me if I'm wrong, they were looking to have this kind of drain into, on the pavement into the system that's, they're looking to have the stormwater detention pond in the north, so it's, I mean, they're going to have pipes come off the building, and then ultimately onto the pavement.
So it's basically sloped, it's sloped pavement?
It's just a slight?
It's not an underground catch basin system draining into the?
I think they're trying to get away from as many catch basins on this particular project as possible.
Okay, because there's an awful lot of impervious surface?
Right.
On this, and so it's going to be a whole lot more runoff in a hurry than just the vacant land.
Right. And that's, I think that's what they're concerned?
But it does meet our, it does meet our impervious surface percentage, does it not?
In terms of?
Does it meet the percentage?
We look at these, these type of developments are a little bit unique in terms of the impervious surface requirements, because the perimeter landscaping is something we look at, if you look, for example, we lumped this into a car dealership, okay? When a car dealership comes in, they don't have much impervious surface on the interior of the parking lot, because they need to display cars, so they are exempt from the fifteen-foot parking area with an island in between, because that's just not typically how the business is set up. So we look at this the same way, and as long as the stormwater detention facilities are adequate to control the stormwater based on the impervious versus pervious surface, then it's, it's just the nature of the business in terms of how to function it.
Okay, but the, where is the detention pond?
I'm not sure, but there is one for that, that's already built there. It's to the north, like Mr. Mormon said, it's up a little bit farther to the north.
Oh, it's off-site, then?
Yeah, it's been built, it was designed for the development of the overall PUD.
Got it, okay, I wasn't aware of that. So there's a detention pond that will take care of not only this development, but the lots to the north?
Correct.
That are yet undeveloped?
Correct.
Okay, good, that's all I need to know. Thank you. Second helpings, gentlemen, Ms. Schwartz? No? Okay, then I need a, I need a motion.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to approve PUD eighteen dash four SSP number two with the nineteen conditions attached.
Mr. Chair, a second.
I have a motion and a second. Any last comments? Then it's roll call time.
Mr. Schreider?
Yes.
Mr. Height?
Yes.
Mr. Loftus?
Yes.
Ms. Schwartz?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Self?
Yes, motion carries five zero and, uh, we welcome yet another business to Beaver Creek. I'm sure you will have no trouble filling those spaces.
Right. Thank you.
One more public hearing, folks, and that is PUD 80H-21 mod 619. We're going back to the mall again.
This is case emerald PUD 88-21 mod 619 on an application filed by High Five Design Group Incorporated, 202 West Main Street, Mason, Ohio, 45040. The application requests a major modification to the specific site plan to allow for the construction of a 156-room four-story hotel located on the north side of Fairfield Commons Boulevard across the street from 2671 and 2687 Fairfield Commons Boulevard. The property is further described as book four, page three, part of parcel four on the Green County Property Tax Atlas.
Thank you. I presume we have someone here? Good, thank you. Step right on up and tell us about it.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the, uh, Planning Commission. My name is Blake Helms with High Five Design Group and I am joined tonight by Mr. A.J. Patel, the hotel owner and project developer, as well as Laura Helbling with VIOX and VIOX Civil Engineers. So, uh, yes, I'm the applicant for the 156-room dual-brand Marriott Hotel at the, at the mall and, uh, we're very excited about the project. Um, soon as the opportunity came to, uh, build at this location, build in the Beaver Creek community, um, such a market-leading, uh, brand, we, we became very excited about the prospects of, um, getting approval for this project. So with that, oh, I do want to say, uh, in reading through the staff report and the motion, um, there are a couple things I'd like to comment on, but I think it'd be easier to discuss them after Randy delivers his report, if I may.
Okay, fine, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The case you have before you is PUD 88-21, it's the Marriott Dual Brand Hotel. This is modification 19-6, it's a major modification of the existing site plan at the mall at Fairfield Commons. They're looking approval, uh, for the construction of a four-story 156-room hotel that's on a little over two acres. I know my staff report refers to 2.8 acres, but that actually includes, and we can get into this later, there was a 58-space parking, space overflow area on the top parking lot area and that's included in that acreage, in that 2.8 acreage. So the, the area down below that we're talking about is, is 2.1 acres that's associated with the hotel. Uh, again, this two, and this two-acre area is just south of what was formerly the Sears Auto Center. There's, I think that's a Hertz rental, car rental place now. Uh, but yeah, this is where, uh, the Sears Auto Center and Sears, um, store used to be. Dick's Sporting Goods store is over here, this is the lower parking lot for that, and then this is the upper parking lot for, um, what was Sears. Ultimately, the, the room place will be going into the upper level of the former Sears and then down below will be the, um, round one, um, entertainment venue is what's going on in the future. Again, this property was rezoned back in 1988 as a PUD. Uh, back then, it was rezoned as PUDs, but then they gave underlying zoning districts. So it wasn't just a PUD, enlisted all the uses, they just gave it a PUD and said it can have this category of uses, which was, in this particular instance, it's a B3. So anything allowed in a B3 district is allowed in, in PUD 88-21. And hotels are in allowed use within, uh, B3 districts and ultimately PUD 88-21. Again, to the south is, um, a few more hotels in PUD 13-4. And then there's, uh, two restaurants, which are part of PUD 97-13. And then there's a, uh, I believe that's a Value City Furniture Shopping and then ultimately a movie theater. Um, and then to the north is obviously the mall and then there's parking areas to the east and the west of the proposed hotel. And seen here is the proposed site plan for the 2.1 acres. Um, and as you can see, there are three access points to the site. The main access point will be off of Fairfield Commons Road. Um, it's a little hard to see, but, which would be about this location. So when you're coming off of North Fairfield Ri, uh, Road, you make a left into the site. Uh, okay, that's a little easier, I guess. And ultimately, the entrance to the, uh, hotel will be in that location there. So, get to it again. There we go. That, that's that main entrance, which lines up with the access road for the Red Robin and the Fox and the Hound Restaurants. Or, um, and the, another access point will be back here behind, uh, or at the lower level of round one, um, in, through that parking lot. And then this will be a new access point they're building into the hill. Uh, right now, this is kind of a hill that goes into this upper parking lot. And they'll be building a secondary access point along with the sidewalk up, uh, and along this parking area, because this is where they're proposing the, uh, upper level parking and 58 parking space overflow that I was referring to earlier. But ultimately, they're showing 108 parking spaces, uh, with this application and that includes parking in the rear of the building and in front of the building. Um, they have a drop-off porticoche area in the front, uh, with the, uh, covered drop-off area. Um, you know, with a hotel this size, you know, they are required to have 164, uh, parking spaces and with the 106 they show below and then the 58, they do meet that. Now, this does represent a net decrease of 164 spaces in the mall overall, but, um, you know, the overall parking counts of the mall are over 4,900 spaces, um, after the, after losing the 164 spaces. So, you know, there's very few times in the year where it's hard to find parking at the mall. I know that the day after Thanksgiving or maybe a few other days, it might be more challenging, but, but in general, it's not, uh, parking counts at the mall really have not been a problem. So staff really doesn't see a problem with reducing the overall parking by 174 spaces, 164 spaces at the mall. Uh, seen here is the proposed architectural elevations. You see, uh, it's a, it's an attractive building. They're actually showing a stone base on all four sides of the building. And then on the end caps, they're showing a, um, it's a brick stamp, uh, it's a ephesus, but it's brick stamped. I think that we do have, uh, the applicant did bring an example of what that looks like. Um, and then they're also showing stone towers on the front of the building and then a darker ephesus, um, along sections of the building as well. And so they do wrap the building with all architecture features and they use these, um, caps on the building that match, you know, it's a similar style cap that matches, uh, a few of the other hotels in the area as well as the, the Soi Medical Center. So it, it kind of has got that theme, uh, throughout the site. Uh, this is just a kind of a closer look-up of the materials. You could see the stone versus the darker ephesus versus the, the lighter brick-stamped ephesus. So I just wanted to give you that, uh, idea of those materials. Uh, they did provide me a, uh, 3D rendering, actually today, or yesterday or today. Um, and so I wanted to include that in the application as well. Uh, you can see it's, uh, an attractive building. I think it'll add, uh, to the site. In terms of landscaping, you know, we did have them include, uh, landscaping along, uh, Fairfield Commons Road, as well as landscaping throughout all the, uh, the parking, uh, the parking lots in the different parking islands, as well as the perimeter of the building. And, and we also wanted to make sure that they did put back, uh, landscaping along the hills that they were needing to, uh, cut into to get that access drive. So, um, you know, we, they do, uh, do a good job of adding adequate and, and actually attractive-looking landscaping throughout the site. Uh, in terms of lighting, uh, a majority of the site will be lit by pole-mounted lighting. Uh, this is a lighting plan that was based off the original site plan, uh, before we got it amended slightly and they did show some poles out in the middle of the parking field and we just don't allow that. So, you know, that condition does continue on that, uh, you know, any light pole needs to be within a landscape island because we, particularly with sites that have 18 or 19-foot parking stalls, um, you know, that just, it already takes away a foot of parking and so it gets even tighter if you have a, a light pole in four corners of a parking space. Uh, but they also show light bollards throughout the, the perimeter of the building and then some wall pack lighting. Uh, but all in all, they do meet our, uh, minimum requirements for foot candles and, um, security lighting and that. They do show, uh, signs on all four elevations, this being a dual-branded, um, uh, two different brands of, uh, the Marriott. Uh, staff didn't, doesn't have a problem with that. You know, they, these are gonna be mounted well over 40 feet high, uh, 40 to 50 feet off the ground. You know, they're between 80 and 100 square feet apiece. Uh, that sounds big, but I think that the fact that they're that high off the ground, um, they're gonna be internally lit. You know, they're gonna have accent lighting on the top. I just think that, uh, I, I just don't see a problem with the, the amount and the style of, of wall signs that they're proposing. In terms of the ground sign, they show one ground sign on the site and that's just to the east of the main entrance. Um, and they just showed it as a face, uh, a sign face on a stone base and we just added a condition that they take that stone and they wrap it on the sides of the, of the, uh, sign just to be congruent with what we have, uh, many other new signs that we are adding throughout the, the sitting. But the same size of five foot, um, you know, 32 square feet, five foot tall and the like. Uh, staff does recommend approval of the applicant's request. I believe there are 20 conditions in the application and in the resolution for your consideration and I will be happy to answer questions following the public hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice, comprehensive report. And this is, again, a public hearing, so are there folks who wish to speak one way or the other or simply ask questions? Please step right on up.
All right, good evening, Mr. Chairman and, uh, members of the, uh, Planning Commission. Uh, my name is Bob Ritter and I'm here today with our principal owners, Mr. and Mrs. Boteniger. Uh, we're also hotel developers ourselves and we currently have over $60 million invested here in hotel development right here in the city of Beaver Creek. Uh, myself, with over 20 years of hotel development, another 20 years managing hotels, feel that I'm pretty well qualified to speak on the matter before us concerning the application filed for a major modification to the current PUD to allow the construction of a 156-room four-story, uh, hotel in a parking lot in front of the Sears, um, former Sears building itself. Uh, let me say, uh, that I would never want to deny someone an opportunity to build a business here in Beaver Creek. However, it's our opinion that this is not the right location and it's our belief that there are better locations here in Beaver Creek. I would like to suggest that taking out the 270 total parking spots, which includes the building footprint, uh, on a 2.8, which Mr. Boquette says it's a 2.1 now, uh, would create a major parking concern during the weekends and throughout the holiday and season. We have witnessed ourselves that right after Halloween, uh, Halloween and all the way through Christmas, that this parking area is completely full of shoppers itself, which they push cars more towards some of the restaurants and actually even some of those even go into our own hotel properties. Um, I do understand that the former Sears store is involving into a entertainment venue along with the furniture store that is up on the second story. Uh, from the actual mall owners themselves, this is gonna create an additional 50,000 more visitors to that particular area. More importantly probably is the major landscaping change that will compromise the Fairfield Commons Mall and some of the surrounding business. Just picture the mall being an island and someone drops a pretty good-sized massive four-story building right in the middle of this island. That, to me, would change the entire picture. The other hotels, being the Residence Inn, Marriott Courtyard, Spring Hill Suites and the soon-to-open Home Two, I feel, we feel, we're well-positioned with access roads and green landscaping around each hotel property with well-access to their own respective parking lots. None of these encroach on the current mall traffic patterns. With the addition of a, of a new 156-room hotel, creating more than 35,000 annual automobiles greatly impacts the traffic at the mall and harming the intended flow and the aesthetics. I ask you this evening to consider a no vote denying the request of this major modification of this specific site. Thank you.
Thank you. Further comments, questions, et cetera, please?
Can we bring up the slide with the parking as well as with, can I borrow your pointer a second? Your laser pointer? Yeah. All right. Is that top up? Okay. Just prior to the meeting tonight, we received an email from, uh, Washington Prime. Uh, one thing they pointed out to us is that in our parking count, uh, we had mistakenly added these, this row of nine parking spots to our total count. Um, and I wanted to correct the record that the number of parking spaces in and around the hotel, um, is actually 97 spaces. And they point out that the upper lot is actually 62 spaces. So, uh, what that does for our overall count is we park our room count. Uh, we have 159, we have 156 parking spaces with three additional for hotel staff. Um, and given this location, we feel like that is more than sufficient parking, uh, for the hotel. So I wanted to, uh, raise that issue that this is actually part of the budget rent of cars, uh, parking spots. So that will, I wanted to make sure that the resolution was, uh, corrected. Um, in reading through the report, there, the, uh, resolution, there was an item nine that we would like fertile, further clarification from, uh, staff as to what that entails.
Let's close the public hearing so we can talk about this. After, I'm gonna answer it now, after the public hearing.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we, we can get to that.
Okay. Um, let me just double-check if there's any, any other remaining items. I think that was really it. Um, I, I would just like to respond briefly to the comment about being, this being an inappropriate location. I think we hold a different opinion, as you might imagine. This is a, a superb location for the, a hotel. The front door to the mall, the more public, uh, retail, uh, stores are, are around to the side and parallel with, um, Fairfield and North Fairfield. And this is more around to the side, uh, and it pockets in really nicely in, into its location. We feel very fortunate to be, uh, able to have this opportunity. I think that's it.
Thank you.
I just wanted to take a second.
If you would, if you identify yourself, please.
Absolutely. My name is Jamie Walters, uh, and I'm a proud resident of Beaver Creek for the last 12 years. Um, my home is about a mile and a half away from the mall and unfortunately it was currently damaged by the memorial tornadoes. Uh, so with that, I get to become an expert by living in one of the hotels around the mall for the next six months. Um, so with that, what I've noticed is really the traffic flow pattern is a concern, uh, coming in. You've got a heavy traffic flow pattern that comes in and then- You've got a heavy traffic flow pattern that comes in, and then people trying to get to that Dollar Tree, the Value City, Chase Bank, and then it kind of gridlocks, and then it stops again going into Red Robin and Fox and the Hound. So has there been a traffic study done? And what is, what type of increased traffic are we looking at that's coming into the mall parking lot? And if so, what corrections are going to be made to fix that so that it doesn't kind of gridlock in that huge area of development? I also had concerns about parking, and I have seen it overflow into the hotels, and then I have to actually park in the mall, in the movie theater parking lot sometimes because other people are kind of flowing over already for those busy, like soccer weekends, or the car shows that happen already in the mall parking lot that I've already seen take place. So eliminating even more spots, and then to have three spots for employees, I think really needs to be looked at and addressed because you're going to have more than three cars coming in to park at the, at the hotel for employees alone and guests. And then lastly, also kind of the hotel just being built in the middle of the parking lot. It's a beautiful building. It looks fantastic. But being built in the middle of the parking lot, you know, is that a trend that we're going to start seeing the mall do? Are we just going to start having pop-ups in the middle of this parking lot instead of the, kind of the pattern that it was already designed to do? So with that, I just wanted to let you guys know, I look at Beaver Creek as the same way as a home, is more than a house, it's more than a home. And we just want to make sure that, you know, we don't start to kind of disrupt everything with the location and zoning changes just to make it not look like a location, actually keep the plan and the development that I think was already set in place to move forward. So, thank you for your time.
Other comments? Don't be shy. Did we have written input? Okay?
Yes, the commissioners did receive a letter that was received by Matt Jeroopwitz from MFC Beaver Creek LLC, and they are the owners of the mall at Fairfield Commons, and they were in support of this application.
Okay, thank you very much. Last chance? Okay, I'll close the public hearing, and I think we're going to start where we started from originally.
Couple of questions for staff. If I understood Mr. Helms properly, so we're now five spots short. Is our cross-parking agreement with the rest of the mall folks going to figure?
I mean, honestly, we've got 4,900 parking spaces in the mall. I mean, granted, there's not going to be, somebody might have to park out here rather than next to them. I'm just not concerned with the overall parking in the mall. I mean, again, there might be a few days throughout the year, soccer tournaments, or the day after Thanksgiving, or something that, yeah, I mean, there might be a challenge. But overall, the 4,000, not almost 5,000 parking spaces, I think is adequate.
I just wanted to ensure we're not going to have to make any changes to meet that, you know?
I mean, if we, if we need to, we can, we can change the number and get them to change that up to 60 or whatever.
That's basically what I was asking.
If that makes you feel more comfortable. Yeah, we can, we can, we can find those numbers if that would make you feel more comfortable. But I mean, honestly, people are going to park where they want to park, so.
Sure. And as far as the traffic studies go, I mean, we're losing Sears, which was, lost Sears, which is a, you know, obviously a big destination in the past. Do you expect there's going to be any major changes to the traffic flow?
I mean, I could ask our engineer to come up and speak to that. I mean, it's a public road.
I'm assuming you guys have already talked about this. I'm trying to address the questions from the audience, or from the, or the, yeah.
That's, I mean, it's a good question. The round one that's coming in below, again, is probably will draw more people than the Sears store would have, but up, up top, the room place is more of a, a parking, it's more of a warehouse-type deal, okay? So it's not like continual retail. So we, the parking calculations for a room place would be one for every 800 square feet. Now, when we look at the overall parking for the mall, back when the malls were thriving and retail was thriving, and you saw the, wasn't the competition for the online shopping, the requirements for parking spots were one per every 200 square feet of gross floor area, okay? So we're looking at 200 square feet, so that's five per 1,000 square feet of, of square footage. In 2009, we significantly changed our regulations to say that there's, given the nature of how retail's evolved and how these, the necessity of the parking related to these, we changed it to one for every 250. So when the mall was designed, it was designed for five per 1,000, when our requirements now are four per 1,000. So you can imagine in almost a million-square-foot building, the significant reduction in terms of what the actual required parking spots are for the mall, given what's out there. So it's heavily overparked. And in terms of the traffic, I mean, our goal has been to create as much traffic into the mall and keep it healthy as possible. I mean, that's, when we looked at the demolition of the old Parisian, the Elder Beerman, malls are a dying breed across this country, and I think we were in a lucky position here where we've seen Sears, actually, the mall, Washington Prime, actually buy out Sears lease instead of letting Sears close, and they're being proactive and attracting tenants to come back fill those spaces. So the traffic at the mall, the mall was designed, from a traffic standpoint, to handle a lot more traffic than was actually out there on, on site today. So I think the construction of hotels is going to be minimal impact whatsoever on the actual traffic flow. It's designed to be a lot more intense than what it's actually been, given the changing nature of the retail business and the retail landscape. So we have no concerns with the number of parking spots. We have no concerns with the traffic impacts. It's, it's a mall. I mean, it was designed for this. So the traffic flow from us, coming into the site will change a little bit, it'll alter, there won't be as many curb cuts as you get closer, we're coming into the site, given that the hotel will be there, but the main drive aisles will remain the same. We'll have multiple drive aisles that will go through that site. In terms of the landscape, it's an asphalt, it's a sea of asphalt out there. I mean, anything you could do to help bring in some green space into that site is, is welcome. Then I think, you know, the reality of the situation is, we looked at it, we need to keep, do what we can to keep the mall healthy and support the restaurants, support the retail. And that's, again, it's a permitted use and is, is overparked, so I don't think there's a concern when we looked at it from a standpoint of parking, landscaping, and traffic flow.
Thank you, staff. That's all the questions, sir.
I do have a question in regards to how we're changing the traffic flow pattern going through, not really traffic flow, but how the, I don't know, the parking lot and the flow of traffic is changing. With that new end piece on the eastern side, is that going to actually line up with the Jared entrance? Am I making sense? I know we're taking out.
Are you talking about up here?
Yeah.
It's, here, pull that up.
That little.
This little.
Look over there on the right.
Is, is still the same hook.
Okay.
It's, it's just a representation of that exit right there.
Okay.
So it's, I think they're just going to maybe resurface it, repave it, but, I mean, it's the same.
Okay. That's all the questions I had.
Thank you.
All right. Well, I guess while you're up, I saw a note on the, the landscape plan that said turf grass.
That's just a, it's grass.
Just wanted to make sure.
It's not going to be artificial or anything.
Turf grass, that, all right.
Not artificial turf.
Brady Bunch in Beaver Creek, so just.
There's a, there's a little bit of that in city, but not.
This is probably for the applicant, but maybe you know this, conference rooms, are there going to be any conference rooms? And if so, what size they're going to be?
I believe so. Yeah, I didn't think there was going to be, no, maybe.
There'll be no.
Not more than a small meeting room. I mean, yeah.
Okay, gotcha. That's all I got. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Broukett.
So could you clarify for me, please, in condition number nine? The term Spinoza's in there, was that an error?
Pete's on the mic.
Yeah, we've been working with Glenn Brayley, who owns Spinoza's, and this has got, it really has no impact to the application we're looking at this evening, but it is a major modification that was essentially authorized by the mall at Fairfield Commons to come through. So they are a part of this application as much as these guys are. So what we looked at in, in number nine, we've been talking to Mr. Brayley for a long time, who owns Spinoza's, and, you know, we're doing everything we can to keep the, the local restaurants and everybody as viable and visible and as successful as possible in this area. So we've had multiple conversations with him on an additional ground sign, like us, which he's worked out with Washington Prime. We're not doing anything that Washington Prime hasn't already agreed to, but given this is a major modification for the whole PUD, it was just an outside, you, you can't even see it on, on that aerial photo, but there would be, what we're asking for to be included in this process is a sign, a ground sign for Spinoza's, it's kind of up there by the BJ's entrance that will direct you to let you know that they're, they're going to plan on expanding their patio, maybe getting a little more presence out there. Again, it's something we thought we could do to help our local businesses kind of survive and get noticed out in that location. We didn't see a problem with it, and Washington Prime, who owns the malls, didn't see a problem with it, and this is kind of mechanism in order to get that, that condition approved in, in there. If it's something that has any effect on the application of the hotel, we'll take it out and we'll handle it on a different, a different process, but we, since we're here, it was easy enough for him to, for the application process, the fees and everything else, just to kind of wrap it into this, in an overall PUD major modification.
Okay. And is the, the sign would be consistent with what that other sign is that they're using for the hotel?
Yeah, we've got.
Same stone wrap and all that?
Yep, exactly.
That's the only question I had. Thank you.
Don't run off. Somebody don't run off. Just a couple of questions to clarify. If my memory serves me, the stretch of the mall Ring Road directly in front of the hotel, where you would turn to go to Red Robin or to the Chase Bank and the Dollar Store, there's a dedicated left turn lane along there, is there not?
Ari, we talk at?
No, there is not. I'm wondering if we need to require one there, or do you feel that that's going to, what I'm thinking of is not only for the hotel, but for the entertainment facility, you're going to get a lot more traffic coming in there.
I mean, honestly, these roads are built, I mean, there's four lanes of roadway through there. I mean, if somebody wants, needs to go around them, they can go around.
Okay.
I mean.
So it's two lane, right now, it's two lanes in both directions?
Right.
Okay. Second question is, the, the new driveway that they're going to put in from the upper level to the lower level, that is only going to affect the, just a few trees right there at the edge.
Right, yeah, we're trying to.
There's not going to be any, any messing with the, that nicely grown-up landscaping that's taken 20 years to look good.
Not, not, yeah, no, I mean, I really.
Along, well, along the slope, going towards the old Sears building.
It don't, you can't, it's hard to see it here, but there's a good amount of the old, old growth is still down here, and that's what we're trying, we were trying to avoid that. I mean, it's challenging with the slope because the way you have to get, you can only do a certain slope, and still be able to get a fire truck up and down it.
So the, so the, the, the new driveway will at least be partially screened by the, by the existing growth?
By the existing.
Between the Ring Road, the Ring Road and the, the new drive?
Right.
Okay. One final question, and that is, I didn't see anything in our packet, but can you characterize, looking at this, the new hotel, if you're on North Fairfield Road, how much taller does it apparently look like against and adjacent to the existing mall structure?
I actually.
Can I show you something? This is a crude model, so ignore the crudity, but.
It looks rusty.
It's just, I just made that 44 feet to the top of that, so, I mean.
So it's, it's maybe a one-story taller than the mall, the existing mall building?
Right, and this is just, again, this, the true building is going to be quite a bit more interesting than that. I just wanted to do it.
I certainly hope so.
I just did it for scale.
Okay.
Just to get an idea of, you know, for here from North Fairfield Road, but if you're out.
Can you swing that around so that it, so you can look at it from further north along Fairfield?
Yeah, I can come up down the road, there's Jared's.
Yeah. Okay.
Just to give you an idea.
So it's, it's a bit taller, but not.
It's not a 10-story building.
Right, right. I just, I was trying to get a, a good idea because I simply don't remember what the original height of the mall building was.
Right, well, the mall sits back.
Sure.
Quite a bit, but yeah, I think the mall's three-story, not four.
Okay, that, that's what I needed to know, thank you. Second helpings, anyone? To our applicant, have we addressed the, you, you said you had some, some questions about the, about some of the conditions? Have we, have we addressed those already? I just want to make sure that, that doesn't get lost in the shuffle.
Yes, I have no problems with item nine.
Okay. Now that you know what Spinoza's is all about. Good pizza bite, by the way.
Glad to be of help.
Okay.
So, yeah, happy to accommodate that. Are you clear on what I stated earlier about the parking?
Yes.
That our parking count is?
Yes. Got it. Okay, good, thank you.
Thank you.
Just want to make sure we were all squared on that. Okay, folks, unless you have further comments, I need a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve PUD 88-21 mod 6/19 with the attached 20 conditions, and I would like to modify to satisfably with Mr. Height's concern. Condition, where is the parking condition?
19.
Condition 19 to read 63, striking out 58.
Okay.
To cover for those five spaces that were brought to our attention.
62.
62.
Okay.
63, 64, wait, 62, it sounds right.
What's one parking place, space among friends? Okay.
I second that.
I have a motion and a second, and you have no problem with the, with the change?
I love it.
Got it.
It's my favorite thing of the night.
Okay. If there are no further comments, we'll call the roll.
Mr. Height?
Yes.
Mr. Loftus?
Yes.
Mrs. Schwartz?
Yes.
Mr. Schreider?
Yes.
Mr. Self?
Yes. Motion carries 5-0, and we're looking forward to seeing what looks like an extremely attractive building. Commissioners, do you want to take a break for a minute? We want to press. Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, yep, Weird Al is waiting.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of Planning Commission. Before you is a request for a minor modification approval to the previously approved site plan for the Fairfield Place Planning, Planned Unit Development, PUD 97-1. Should you choose to approve this modification, it would allow for the construction of an approximately 3,600-square-foot fifth-third bank on Outlet Number Three of the Fairfield Place Development. So as you all are aware, the original PUD for 97-1 was approved in 1997 by City Council and was subject to a referendum. The original approval was overturned, and then the city and the applicant reached a settlement, and within that settlement, there were a couple of, of conditions of approval that actually refer to the, to the outlots specifically. One of those was the building setback, so the condition requires that there be a 70-foot building setback along North Fairfield Road for all of the outlots. This includes the Fairfield Place multi-tenant building, as well as the City Barbecue Chick-fil-A, and then also this proposed fifth-third. The building that is being proposed does meet that 70-foot setback. The other item within that settlement that applies to this property was building coverage. So for the entire PUD, the outlot requirement was that it be no more than 30,000 square feet of building coverage for all of the outlots. This is the last outlot of, of the outlots within this development, and with this application, that total comes to 28,129 square feet, so we are right under that 30,000, so we're at 94% of that, that full 30,000 square-foot coverage, so we've got that covered. So here is the site plan for the proposed fifth-third. A few years ago, we did approve a Huntington Bank on this site. This, the site layout is almost identical to what was previously approved for that Huntington Bank. The only real difference now is the, the actual building, and I'll get to that in a second. So there are two access points off of the access road along the back. There is no access along North Fairfield, and there along North Fairfield, and there is no access point along that main access point that comes off of North Fairfield, in between this and the City Barbecue Building. There is also an additional cross-access that goes into the Fairfield Place Shopping Center, the Milano's and, and all of that, so we will have that, that flow through there finally, that we've been waiting for. There's an existing cross-access easement on the plat, so, you know, that's, that's all taken care of. As far as parking goes, the applicant is providing 32 parking spaces for this development, there are 25 parking spaces that are required, one stall for every 250 square feet of floor space, plus one for each employee on the busiest shift. Because the building is approximately 3,600 square feet, that would require 15 spaces plus 10 employees, brings that total to 25 required. The applicant is providing 32, so we are all good on that as well. As far as the building design goes, when the applicant first came in, Fifth Third has a new prototype, that prototype didn't really fit in with, with, with kind of what we're looking for with the surrounding developments that we had, so the applicant actually went out, took a look at, at everything that was in Fairfield Place, and kind of the design elements that we were looking for, and actually incorporated their prototype into kind of what we have out there now, and so we're actually very pleased with, with the design that they come up, came up with, four-sided architecture, brick all the way around, and then kind of this ephes and the glass and the, the colors is kind of the prototype that they're now using on their building, so, you know, we're, we're very happy with, with kind of the, what, what, what they came up with, based on, on the comments that we had from them. As far as landscaping goes, the landscaping is consistent with, with the adjacent developments, we don't have any issues with the landscaping, and stormwater is already addressed with the giant detention pond behind the mound, they do have to do some water quality stuff as well, and that'll all be addressed before we issue zoning permits. Really quickly, the lighting, we did add a condition that just requires that the lighting match in height and style the adjacent shopping center, we don't really wanna see, you know, 25-foot-tall lights in the next door, 15-foot lights, so we'd like everything to stay consistent, so we did add a condition of approval for that. And then finally, the signage, they do show some signage, very minimal signage, there is already a sign package for this shopping center, so they will just have to meet the requirements of that, of that original sign package for Fairfield Place. So staff is recommending approval with the 13 conditions, and I can answer any questions you have now. Also, Ms. Rooney, from the architectural firm, is here as well to answer any questions if you have them for her.
Thank you. I'm just gonna throw this one open. Once again, this is, this is a minor mod, so this, we are administrative on this, we make the decisions, this does not go forward. So I'll just throw this open to anyone.
I just have one quick one. Is this gonna be part of like that HOA or COA that you guys are doing with that access road? The, you know, that medical building that was approved a little bit?
Yeah, the, everything in the, in the development is gonna be part of that, so they'll all be, they will all have responsibility in maintaining the, the access road, and, and with this, they're, they're gonna, I didn't talk about it, but it'll all be curbed, all on their side and everything, so, yeah, so, yeah, absolutely.
Cool, awesome. That's all I got.
Don't run off. The, I, I know as we go north on Fairfield, the grade separation between the road and the buildings starts to drop, and my concern here is if, if there's enough of a drop there to expose any roof-mounted AC, or whatever happens to be on the roof, are the parapets tall enough to cover it?
Yeah, this lot is actually very flat, so, a, a, as you go north, as you said, you start to see over, but at this point, like, you're looking directly...
Okay, so it's pretty much at grade?
Right, but we do, we have a condition that states that all the mechanical units be screened, completely screened by parapet wall, so it shouldn't be an issue.
Okay, good. Okay, folks, further questions? Then, well, I'm gonna need the motion.
Mr. Chair, I motion to approve PUD 97-1, mod 6-19, with the 13 attached conditions.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Chair, a second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Anything else that would go to the order here? Okay. If you would be so good as to read the roll.
Mr. Loftus?
Yes.
Mrs. Schwartz?
Yes.
Mr. Schreider?
Yes.
Mr. Height?
Yes.
Mr. Self?
Yes, motion carries 5-0, and we're looking forward to seeing a new bank building. I hope you're not gonna close the one on North Fairfield, or on, on Dayton-Zenia Road. Good. We're getting dangerously close to the end of our agenda tonight, so have at it.
Okay, I'm gonna throw a lot of numbers at you, so I apologize. This is case S19-2, the applicant's requesting to subdivide, which is what is currently a 28.6-acre parcel, and subdivide, split out 13.84 acres of that, of that 28-acre parcel, and of, take that 13.8 acres down into 30 different lots. And the first 29 lots will be the first 29 buildable lots of the Cedar Brook Flower Farm subdivision that we were talking about earlier this evening with the MI Homes. The 30th lot will be, and you can see it here, well, the 30th lot will be the open space that, where the stormwater detention pond and some just non-buildable area that will be included in this subdivision, and then the remaining acreage will be subdivided at a future second phase, they're looking just to do this first phase, which is the 13.84 acres of that subdivision. And then there's also going to be 2.48, 2.4 acres that'll be dedicated as right-of-way, both for the main road throughout the site, as well as some frontage along Shaker Town, because right now, Shaker Town is, the old, old way we have it is, the end of the property and actually stops at the center line of the road, and then from the center line to where we actually have an easement is the roadway, so this way, we're cleaning it up into the new style of where it's actually city right-of-way, rather than just an easement. Staff does recommend approval of the request, this is, again, this is just phase one. Of the conditions that we are requiring, that they, they pay parkland dedication fees in lieu of any parkland dedication prior to the release of any permit, that they also get a homeowners' association document reviewed and, by our attorney, prior to them recording that with the county, and then they, we won't release the plat, which actually creates the lots, until we actually see that homeowners' association docket, document recorded with the county itself, so that we're not creating a subdivision, putting it in place without a homeowners' association, actual covenants restrictions, and, and requirements of maintenance of the open areas and, and street, not streets, but of, of the landscaping and things like that. We want that, we want the requirements first before we actually build the neighborhood, so those are the requirements of their request. I recommend that, you know, Planning Commission approve this, subject to the eight conditions. And you have any answer questions now?
Excellent, thank you. Folks, questions?
Uh, yes, I do.
Okay.
These don't look anything like what we just went over earlier today in this proposed plan. I'm having a hard time lining up these two Cedar Brook Flower Farm set of plans.
I'm not sure what you're looking at on the second one.
Where am I?
Right, this is the first phase.
No, I know it's one section, but there's, there's no curve in the road, I'm not, I'm not seeing how the lots are lined up, maybe help me?
You're looking at, it's, it's in two pieces.
Yep.
The drawing there, flip, flip the drawing over.
Yeah, if you could help me.
This one here, you're, you're looking at the northern section.
Yep.
You need to look at the southern section. Here's the, here, what you're seeing is this part, right here.
Okay, and the, the, okay, section, so that second road will get built to Newton.
There's a section over here, and there's a section, it'll be three phases, I believe. Three phases? It looks like three phases?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay. No, I was just trying, there's no bend on, was it Damar, Dumar Drive right there, there's a big bend on, on this one, not on here, and it just looked a little different here. Got it, okay. That's all I got, sorry.
And just to refresh my memory, we are requiring a left turn lane on Shaker Town as part of this development.
As part of the assessment project with this road, yes.
Correct, so that...
I believe that we're building that as part of our project.
That's where we're in three lanes, they're, they're across, so...
Okay, so there will be, I'm sorry...
There is gonna be a turn lane into there.
Turn lane into the, into the plat, okay.
And they'll be put in, yeah.
Just out of curiosity, for the, for the developer, are you going to be, will the second phase be the north part, or the, the west part?
I don't think right now, yeah, I think right now, the northern part is phase two, and the western part is going to be three.
Okay, well, if you build the north part, will, will you be connecting, the only access would be off of Newton Drive, because you wouldn't be connecting the north section with the, with the south section that you have now, there, there, I don't believe there'd be any streets connecting, would there?
You know, I have to pull one, if I could pull my plan and look, I honestly don't know the answer to that question off the top of my head.
I thought we're not connecting Newton until they're done.
I'd have to check.
I thought we put that in and not connect to Newton till the end.
Can you, yeah, can you check, please? The, the connection between the existing Newton Drive and your phase one actually goes through phase two and phase three?
It, it goes, the connection is in phase two, so phase two is actually sort of the, the 90-degree of the north, was that northwest corner?
Okay, so, so it would go, the, the phase two would actually go all the way to the stubbed-out end of Newton Drive, the current stubbed-out end of Newton?
Correct.
Okay. So that's when the road would connect?
That's right.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure, because I know we're gonna get a lot of questions from folks if your construction trucks were going through the existing plat.
That will not happen.
No, I didn't, I thought we put that in there to begin with.
Yeah.
Just making sure, because I'm gonna get asked if I don't ask now. Okay, that's, that's what I needed to know, thank you. Further questions, gentlemen? Ms. Schwartz, we good? Okay, I need a, I need a motion, for, for more.
Mr. Chair, I motion to approve the Mission Point Case, number S19-2, with the eight attached conditions.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I second.
I got a motion and a second, and let's read the roll one more time.
Mrs. Schwartz?
Yes.
Mr. Schreider?
Yes.
Mr. Height?
Yes.
Mr. Loftus?
Yes.
Mr. Self?
Yes. Motion carries 5-0, and we'll be looking forward to seeing the construction starting, and I need a motion to adjourn, unless you have something else for the good of the order.
Mr. Chair, I move to adjourn.
Mr. Chair, a second.
I got a motion and a second, and we'll make it for the fireworks. Or Weird Al Yankovic.